For a moment, I thought they were selling a mobile home for three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
They best not be.
My soul left my body. I was like, no way this trashy neighborhood sells mobile homes for that much.
No, they better not.
No, it's not. It was on a different road. That just scared me.
Music sounds like a good volume.
I haven't muted.
Aw, what a shame. It's good music. No copyright sounds. Uh, what is this one called? It's by like some dude. I forget his name anyways. Alright, new study session.
Avicii?
No, it's not by Avicii. What? No.
I don't know. Alan Walker?
Alan Walker, yeah. By Alan Walker. It's a good song. The, um, the original is really good. It's got actual vocals in it too.
If I PM you, is it gonna show up on stream?
If you what?
If I private message you on Discord, is it gonna show up on?
It won't. It's a notification. We'll have her play a noise. Alright.
It's fine.
Here it is.
I pissed this on again?
Oh no.
Yas, bleh. That was horrible.
Oh my goodness. Your new profile picture. Who's that?
Yeah, Asuka.
It's Asuka?
No, Asuka.
Asuka!
Asuka Langley something.
Should I do categories? I should do categories.
Yes.
You want me to do category? I'll do categories. Yeah, do something new. Let's see.
Hold on, hold on. I have, um, I have a list here.
Aircraft performance, weight and balance and stability.
That's, that's calculations though. I don't know if you wanna do calculations.
Not really. Um, aviation weather is really bad and flight operations is also really bad.
No, what you can do is you can click on the category and then you can select subcategories.
I see. Looks like I haven't done any hazardous weather stuff at all.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Um, oh no, I got a zero on it. Even better. Cool. Um, icing, I got, I'll, I'll add icing. So how many questions does it choose? Or does it do all of them for that category?
All of them for that category.
Oh, I don't wanna do that many questions though.
Hazardous weather and stuff?
Ooh, flight maneuvers and emergencies I am slacking on, so.
Why don't you do all? You do realize this is a big test, right?
It's a very big test. Hello, how's it going?
You don't even wanna study by category. Hello, hoesies.
Is that like both of these? Sorry.
Welcome to the coding future.
Welcome to the cool kids club. Uh, let's see. Aircraft performance. Aw.
Wow, we left.
Do you like leave the server, period? Or just, oh wow.
I'm watching Leave the Server.
Oh, okay, I think that's good. Icing, emergencies and flight maneuvers. Oh, safety of flight has forty-one questions, bro. Uh-uh. How about not? Oh wow, airplane systems are a hu- a hundred percent. Everything on flight controls, instruments, power plant, propeller. I'm just like bossing it. Cool. Um, question mode. Study questions with multiple choice answers. Is that what I have to click? Yeah. Um... Man, that's a lot of questions. Weight, balance and stability. Ah, so many questions, you know?
What do you mean? It's just twenty more questions.
We'll put that in there. We'll put thunderstorms on there too.
Wait, he says think you are doing good with her, so. Huh? Oh no.
Yeah, studying for exams, bro. It ain't like that. It ain't. Hold on. Alright, icing. Oh, collision avoidance. Let's do that. Aromical factors. Alright, let's go.
You do realize once you click on all those categories, it will add up?
Yeah, eighty-five questions. But does it put it in a random order? Yeah, it does, I think. Yeah, it's random. Sup? Listen to some no copyright sounds. Studying. I'm also live streaming YouTube. Okay, question number one, six minutes in. Of the following, which is accurate regarding turbulence associated with thunderstorms? Outside the clouds, sheer turbulence can be encountered twenty miles laterally from severe thunderstorm. Or sheer turbulence is encountered only inside cumulonimbus clouds or within a five mile radius of them. Or outside, sheer turbulence can be encountered fifty mi- I'm gonna go fifty miles. Oh, nope, it's twenty miles.
It's twenty.
I'm dumb. Alright, which situation would most likely result in freezing precipitation? Rain falling from air which has a temperature of zero degrees Celsius or less into air having a temperature of zero degrees Celsius or more.
Oh, it could've been so dumb.
Temperature of more than thirty-two degrees Fahrenheit into air having a temperature of thirty-two degrees Fahrenheit or less. Um... Freezing precipitation would be, yes, more than thirty-two degrees into a temperature of less than thirty-two degrees.
Yep.
Frost covering the upper surfaces of an airplane wing usually will cause um, the airplane to stall at an angle of attack that is lower than normal. Yes.
Yeah.
Ah, here's Alan Walker again. It's the same music. They, I love how they just made like ten different songs from the same song. It's pretty great.
Remixes, you know?
And it never gets old. It never gets old. I listen to this all day.
It just gets old. You know, to each their own.
Fair enough. You begin a standard rate turn to the right. The airplane is in complete clean configuration. The airspeed is increasing. What should you do to maintain the standard rate turn?
You don't.
You don't?
You don't.
Alright, clean configuration, airspeed's increasing. Uh... Take out power.
Oh well.
That's not an option. It's increase angle of bank, maintain same bank angle, or decrease angle of bank. I'm gonna say increase. Wait, you're already at standard rate, so you just keep the same banking. Oh no, you're increasing airspeed though, which means you need a greater angle of bank. Yes. Yeah, okay. Near your destination airport is a supercell thunderstorm. Which statement is most true? Supercell thunderstorms rarely produce severe weather. Supercell thunderstorms, thunderstorms may persist for an extended period of time, or supercell thunderstorms typically dissipate quickly, causing no real threat. I'm gonna say they're here for an extended period of time. That is correct. Alright. While taxiing at night, you observe an aircraft in front of you with a white light in the middle, a red light to the right, and a green light to the left. It is taxiing towards you. If it's a white light in the middle? Yeah, it's taxiing towards you. Cause, um, green is starboard right and red is port left.
What?
Yes. So if green is on the left and red is on the right, that means it's coming straight at you.
Yeah.
So you should, you should pull a one-eighty and get out of there.
Yeah, you just said port left?
Port is left, yes. Which is red. Starboard is right, which is green.
What's that? I'm gonna find out the right, the final answer.
You just have to think about which one has more letters. So red has less letters. Red has less letters than green, right? Port has less letters than starboard. And left has less letters than right. So they're all the same thing.
Is that something you're taught or is that like something you say to help?
That's just, that's something that, that to help yourself. But I mean, it's a teaching tool too. The other way I remember it is, um, at a red light, you can turn right, uh, after stopping. So therefore, right is green. Cause you can always turn right. But that may not help you.
No, that does not.
Uh, but basically, green has more letters than red, right? And so starboard has more letters than port. And right has more letters than left, so. Yeah, that's how you remember it. A pilot's most immediate and vital concern in the event of complete engine failure after becoming airborne on takeoff is maintaining a safe airspeed. Correct, cool. You are out practicing commercial maneuvers with your instructor. Ha, relevant. Which maneuver increases your risk of a stall? Slow flight? Eight on pylons or steep spiral? Um...
Hmm.
Mostly slow flight and steep spiral.
Yeah, but I feel...
I feel like slow flight more so, cause steep spiral, you can, you can use a lot of airspeed if you want to for steep spiral.
Yeah, but with, with steep spiral, you're really aiming for your best glide.
True. Or like ten knots above it.
Right, so then that's seventy-five to eighty-five and the airplane that we fly. It'd be slow flight, cause you can, you know, slow.
I still think slow flight is the most risk of a stall.
Yeah, no, I do.
It is slow flight, okay. But I think steep spirals would cause a more dangerous stall if you were to stall, because you're
Yeah.
At a steep bank. Oh no, here we go.
We're gonna err in.
If the glide slope becomes inoperative during the ILS runway three-one procedure at Delta Sierra Mike, the Marine International, what MDA applies? The glide slope is inoperative. Um... If you don't have a glide slope, but MDA's gonna apply, I'm gonna go with the localizer, right? So thirteen-twenty? Yeah, cool. Figure fifty-two. Area seven. What is the length of the longest runway at Sacramento International? Area seven. I cannot read that. That is so small. Sacramento International. Uh... I'm gonna go with eight thousand six hundred. Yes. Which is an example of a chartered military training route with no segment above fifteen hundred feet AGL? Is there supposed to be a figure with this? There is no figure with this. Um, I'm just gonna go with fifteen hundred. It's probably wrong. Nope, twelve oh seven. I have no idea how to even solve that, so. It is what it is. After experiencing a power plant failure at night, one of the primary considerations should include uh... Oh, this is one of those memorization ones, isn't it?
More.
Planning the emergency approach and landing to an unlighted portion of an area? Yeah, that's the, that's the correct answer, even though it's a dumb question. Uh, refer to figure fifty-five. En route on Victor four-four-eight from BTG Vortec to YKM Vortec. So Bravo Tango Golf to Yankee Kilo Mike. Four-four-eight. Alright, Victor four-four-eight. Okay. Yankee Kilo Mike. And... I'm guessing this is... This must be Bravo Tango Golf, right? Where does it say it? It doesn't say it, does it? Why does it? Can I just not scroll down far enough or what? The heck? Can I not see that that's? I'm guessing this is Bravo Tango Golf though. It's gotta be. Ah, yes, another banger. That's gotta be Bravo Tango Golf. Okay. What minimum navigation equipment is required to identify the Lima Echo Alpha Romeo November intersection? Hmm, what is this? Uh, frequency? Uh, one-one-two-point-three? Seventy miles on the two-eight-five radial? So you must have two VOR receivers. One VOR, one DME. No, you must have two VOR. Cause you have to have you have to have this VOR radial. Radial L-oh-three-niner. And you have to have the DME three-eight. And then you also must have you also must have this, uh, two-eight-five radial on Lima Tango Juliet. Oh. Yeah, so you need two VORs and a DME. No, I guess technically you don't need a DME, cause they're only gonna intersect at one point, so you only need two VORs. What? How are you going to identify this with one VOR? Please, somebody tell me.
I don't, yeah, I just memorize that type of stuff, cause like...
Well, I'm just thinking, how are you gonna identify this point with only one? Uh... How are you gonna do it with just a VOR? If you don't have DME, period. How are you gonna identify that intersection?
We don't have a period.
No, cause, alright, it's ten miles to it's ten miles to Delta, um, to Delta Mike Alpha Zulu Hotel, and another ten miles to oh my goodness. To Oscar Juliet Uniform Mike Uniform. And then eighteen miles to Lima Echo Alpha Romeo November. So... Thirty-eight miles. Yeah, that's what it should be. So how are you going to identify it without a DME, period? With just one VOR receiver? Just a VOR? Cause the intersection is defined. You can either define it by DME of thirty-eight on the zero-three-nine radial, or the intersection with this other radio passes through. You can't do it with just one. You need two VORs.
And that's because you gotta like air traffic control school? And then it's finally time to be your base?
You need two VORs.
You gotta go to work in Port Hurst in Hampshire, using air traffic controller.
It's awful.
I know.
Awful.
Yeah, that question is awful.
Uh, from which measurement of the atmosphere can stability be determined? The ambient lapse rate, right? Yes. Which of the following conditions would most likely result in hyperventilation?
A sense of well-being.
Excessive carbon monoxide. No, insufficient carbon monoxide. That's the answer. Cause how your, how your body measures whether or not you're getting enough oxygen is by how much carbon dioxide you're producing. So if you don't have enough carbon dioxide, your body's like, ah, I need more oxygen for my body to make into carbon dioxide. And then you just keep breathing a ton. And eventually you pass out, and then it solves itself, cause you get more carbon dioxide. Boom. Answered question. A pilot is responsible for maintaining and being aware of his or her health at all times. What is the point of this before or during flying? To build up a tolerance, to be able to fly an airplane proficiently even when the pilot's health is deteriorating?
I've never done that before. I have never flown in my career. I was super sick. How dare you fly an airplane while you have COVID nineteen?
And then give it to your co-pilot.
Yeah.
The pilot needs to be in the best health possible. Hmm, pilot needs to be aware of fatigue levels. I'm going with that one. Yeah, okay. Kind of a trick question, but I got it.
My pillowcase has butterflies on them.
Huh?
My pillowcase, my pillowcase has a butterfly on it. I didn't realize.
Oh. When approaching a VOR DME Alpha, the symbol twenty-eight-hundred in MSA circle represents a minimum safe vector altitude within twenty-five nautical miles of okay, the VOR DME Alpha. Of the Hotel India Charlie.
Hick?
That's right, Hick. VOR supposedly.
Yeah.
It should be.
Mm-hmm, should be.
Hmm...
Eastern Colorado.
Why is that not an option? The Delta Echo Alpha November India intersection, the white cloud VOR DME. Oh, I'm guessing that's Hick, is white cloud?
A low pressure system. Oh, what is it? Oh, I can see.
White cloud is Hick. Okay, yes. White cloud is Hick. That's
Yes.
Bravo FAA, bravo. You decide to donate blood at your local blood drive. What effects should you be aware of if you decide to go fly? You're gonna be more susceptible to hypoxia. Right? You'll be more thirsty and hungry and susceptible to hyperventil- um, no, I'm gonna say hypoxia.
Eaters.
I'm correct. In the contiguous US, vertical limits of Victor airways extend from one thousand two hundred feet AGL up to, but not including eighteen thousand feet MSL. I'm gonna go with that one. Yes. Nice. What is the general direction of movement of the other aircraft if during a night flight, you observe a steady white light and a rotating red light ahead and at your altitude? A steady white light would be there landing or taxi light. No, that'd be the taillight. The nav light on the tail. And the rotating red light's gonna be the bacon, beacon. The bacon! Spring the bacon! Okay. It should be it should be headed away from you. But it could also be approaching you head-on, because it could be the runway, the taxiway, I mean, the taxi or takeoff light. But I'm assuming if it's a taxi or takeoff light, you're probably not gonna see the beacon, because it'll be so blinded. So I'm gonna say headed away. That's correct, cool. I guess it'd be too easy if they told you the nav lights, right? Too easy, so they can't tell you that. You get the white nav light. That's all you get. Alright, the symbol ninety-two-hundred in the MSA circle of the ILS runway three-five right procedure at Delta Echo November represents a minimum safe vector safe sector, sorry, sector altitude, within twenty-five nautical miles of Delta Echo November, which is, where is it? Where is it? Where is it? Denver, VOR. Boom. I didn't know those lyrics to these songs. If you experience an engine failure in a single-engine aircraft after takeoff, you should establish a proper glide attitude. Uh, adjust the pitch to maintain VY. Turn to the wind. I'm gonna go VY. Nope, it's establish proper glide attitude. But isn't that the same thing though? Adjust the pitch to maintain V- no, no, VY. Oh, I'm so stupid. I don't nah, I got that right, just my brain wasn't thinking. Not VY. It's prop- best glide is not VY. Best, best, best climb, well, best rate of climb. Which would increase the stability of an air mass? Warming from below, cooling from below, decreasing water vapor. Decreasing water vapor is what I'm going with. Nope, it's cooling from below, cool. The purpose of isogonic lines being drawn on an aeronautical chart is to uh... connect points of equal magnetic variation. Yes. Deviation is observed, variation exists. Unless otherwise stated, instrument procedures use the standard IFR climb gradient of two hundred feet per nautical mile. Sir, what is of particular danger in regard to a gust front associated with a thunderstorm? Uh, hail and freezing rain and low-level wind shear, right? What's of particular danger? I'm gonna go the hail and freezing rain. Nope, apparently it's low-level wind shear. I'm, I'm, I think hail and freezing rain would be more dangerous though, especially the freezing rain. But, whatever. For IFR operations off established airways, root portion of an IFR flight plan should list VOR navigational aids which are no more than how many miles apart? Forty, seventy, or eighty? I wanna say it's either forty or eighty. I'm moving with eighty. Yep, it's eighty. It has been over eight hours since your last alcoholic beverage, but you've had some heavy, heavy alcoholic drinks. When can you fly? Not until blood alcohol level falls below point oh four percent. Um... And are not under the influence of alcohol. Yes. While taxiing out for takeoff, you observe precipitation falling in the form of ice pellets. What weather phenomenon likely exists? Uh, if you've got ice pellets, you've got a temperature inversion, cause it's warmer and it's falling and it's freezing. Temperature inversion aloft, yes. What features normally associated with the cumulus stage of a thunderstorm? Continuous updraft. Prefer to figure fifty-four, area three. Area tree by Meadowlark. Your route takes you through the solid magenta dot. Oh! For reasons of national security, pilots are requested to avoid something, something at and below eight hundred feet AGL in this area. Requested. For some reason, I think that that's a little more than a, than a slight request. Is there anything you should be concerned about? Yeah, you're requested to stay above eight hundred feet AGL. Requested. You see you see, that seems like something fishy's happening there. For reasons of national security, huh? Right near a couple restricted areas.
You just don't ask about it. Don't think about it.
Well, it just says requested. Technically, you could buzz it if you wanted to, right?
Do you wanna find out?
Yeah, no, not really. But if they really cared that much, they'd make it a restricted area, right? Just saying, if they cared that much, they'd make it a restricted. Just saying, if they cared that much, they'd make it a restricted area, but it's not. It's just requested to avoid it. Okay. Anyways. Figure 55. Uh, I grew I Victor 112. The bottom here. Victor 112 from Bravo Tango Golf to Lima Tango Juliet. Where's Lima Tango Juliet? I'm guessing it's off to the right somewhere.
Good night everyone.
What was that?
Good night.
Good night. Are you going to bed? I heard good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, cool. Okay. Uh, en route on Victor. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Minimum altitude crossing gimme intersection. That's Golf Yankee Mike Mike Echo Gimme. Minimum crossing altitude at Gimme. 7,000 feet, I'm guessing. Yes, sir. You realize you're probably hyperventilating. Carla, is this you in turbulence? You realize that you are probably hyperventilating. What symptoms would be evident of this? Visual impairment, muscle spasms, pale skin and dizziness. Hello Jeffrey.
And Carla.
Man, you just missed this new guy that was in voice chat. The only thing he said was good night. Yeah.
Oh. Interesting.
It is interesting.
Very intriguing.
Very interesting.
Intubably kind sir.
Alright, do you know what the symptoms of hyperventilation are, Jeffrey? Is it A, hearing difficult difficulties and numbness, B, pale skin and dizziness, or C, visual impairment and muscle spasms?
Definitely the first one.
Hearing difficulties and numbness? Yeah, I'm going with that one too. It's wrong! I've never heard of muscle spasms with hyperventilating though.
Well, I guess your muscles are spasming when you're hyperventilating.
Your muscles are spasming.
I'm gonna make your muscles spasm.
Oh. My goodness, they use the same figures for all of these. I swear. Alright. In the Denver ILS runway 35 right, the glideslope intercept altitude is glideslope intercept altitude is niner thousand feet at Drum. Nope, it's 7,000 feet.
It's F.
Oh, I guess it is, isn't it? Because the little squiggly arrow is the intercept altitude, isn't it?
Yeah, you big goof.
Dumb. It's the little lightning bolt squiggly. Yeah, I know that. I'm pretty much correct because I know that.
Daniel, you're a big goof.
You're a goof big.
You're a silly goose. Go get in the pond.
Silly goose. Go get in the pond if you're gonna be a silly goose.
Yeah, exactly.
Name the four fundamentals involved in maneuvering an aircraft. Power, pitch, bank and trim. Um, straighten level flight, turns, climbs and descents. Yeah. Yeah, that one.
Barrel rolls.
Yeah, that's the fundamentals. You learn that on lesson one, barrel rolls. Area two, the 16 indicates.
You wanna see me do it again?
Of course. The maximum elevation figure for that quadrangle, the minimum safe vector out of sector altitude for that quadra- quadrangle.
Ew, quadrilaterals.
Quadrangles.
You're a quadrangle.
It's the minimum safe sector altitude. No, it's the maximum elevation figure for that quadrangle. Why would they put it like that? That is such an annoying way to write it.
You ask questions.
Elevation figure for that quadrangle. What are the characteristics of stable air, poor visibility? Uh, steady precipitation and stratus clouds. Let's go. You're on a cross-country flight at night and experience a total power plant failure. What is the proper course of action?
Dive bomb into the lake.
Uh, B, glide towards a congested area so it's easier to be located upon landing. Ah, yes. Land in the city.
Oh, is that New York City I see?
Immediately begin shining your flashlight out of the window to look for an open field. Hmm, yes.
Daniel, oh, is that New York City I see?
Is that the World Trade Center? Sorry.
Prepare for landing.
Maintain positive aircraft control. I'm going with that one. It's the least likely to cause me harm. Uh, increase the rate of turn at the same time.
Chested area.
A pilot should hmm, uh, increase the bank and decrease airspeed. Yes.
I get to work from home.
You get to work from home? Why? Are you sick? Got COVID?
No, I have to do trainings and they figured I could just easily do it at home instead of going into Best Buy to do them.
Sounds about, that sounds good.
Would you work at Best Buy in Newington?
I do now.
Do you know who Aiden Lexa is?
Oh, no.
I have no idea. Today was my first day.
Oh my man. Didn't even put the, the person's name on.
Today was my first day.
I literally met like two people and the other person that was also uh, his first day.
But does the absence of the procedure turn barb on the plan?
His name is E- and that's about all I know.
Um, a procedure turn is not authorized. Not authorized.
It's very authorized. Do it.
It's so authorized, you can do a loop trip in the clouds. Hard IFR.
Do it.
When conducting a go-around, the pilot must be aware that flap should be raised as quickly as possible to reduce drag and increase airspeed. Uh, radio communications are key to alerting other aircraft in the pattern they go around maneuvers being conducted. Or the airplane is trimmed for power-off condition and it'll cause the nose to rise rapidly. It's go, it's that one. That one. What's true regarding stars? My day? Well, you see, it started at about 12:40 when I landed at Sanford. And it was extremely bumpy and windy and raining. And, um,
Unpleasant?
Didn't get home till like quarter after one and then I went to sleep. And then I got up four hours later and went to work and I was supposed to only have half a day and I was like, yay, it's only half a day. I'm so tired. And then it was like, oh hey, there's a few big jets coming in. So I'm actually, let's do that. And so then I was there until almost five o'clock.
Yikes.
So I did a 10-hour day when I was supposed to do way less than that. But hey, eight hours of overtime ain't bad, you know?
Yeah, right? Oh yeah, you don't know what my schedule is?
What's your schedule?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
That's the same as my schedule. Except for I have 12-hour shifts. So Wednesdays I only have to do half a day.
Oh, I have, I have 10-hour shifts.
Yeah, and I do 12s on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Thursday's tomorrow. Wow, I do 12-hour shift, three of them in a row. Yippee. Hey, what's true regarding stars? Do you know that? Stars are?
Uh, if you get five stars, you're very wanted in a call of, um, not Grand Theft Auto.
Call of Auto.
Call of Auto, yes.
They're used to separate IFR and known VFR traffic to facilitate transition between en route and instrument approach procedures. That's the one.
Yikes.
Ice pellets encountered during flight normally are evidence that there are thunderstorms, a warm front's passed, or a warm front is about to pass. I'm gonna go with thunderstorms.
Heat one bow?
Nope, it's a warm front. Figure 53. I think I still have 53 open though then.
Order 56.
Execute order 66.
What if I told you it's execute order 56?
It's not though.
Well, what if I told you it was?
You'd be wrong. No. I am their father.
Hello.
How much higher is the top of the tower four nautical miles east of the fire? Firebow? Fire, fireba? Fariba, fariba reba airport. Uh, than the airport elevation itself. Oh wow. Three different knowledges. Okay, so you gotta be able to find how high the tower is. You have to find the tower four nautical miles east of the airport. You have to find the airport and you have to know how to read the airport elevation. This is just a convoluted question.
You're a convoluted question.
Four miles east.
I'm gonna give you my convoluted question.
Fi- uh, 354. The airport is 157. This is 354. That means it is 100
Daniel, you have sinned.
197 feet higher. No. Yeah, 197 feet higher.
Daniel, you have sinned.
Why?
Because you're a sinner.
Okay.
Just accept it.
I know I am. Thank you. Which is a common symptom of hyperventilation. Again, again? A sense of well-being. Yeah, no, I'm going with drowsiness this time. 53, air, figure 53 again, again. Oh, Couchilla Airport. Chow- Chowchilla?
Coachella.
Coachella, yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's not Coachella. Because Coachella is spelled like C-O-A-C-H-E-L-L-A, right? No, this is C-H-O-W-C-H-I-L-A. It's literally Chowchilla. It's like a chinchilla but with more food.
Chinchillas are so cute.
They're also very soft and fluffy. You like playing in taco powder.
That was Daniel.
No, actually the opposite.
I have socks on. It's okay.
Oh, okay. In that case. My address is.
Starts with an F, maybe?
Area three. Couchilla. There's a magenta flag symbol depicted. What does this symbol mean?
Bees chirgers.
Is anyone watching your stream?
No one's watching now. There was somebody a second ago.
If I had two monitors, I would, but I don't.
Well, but that Best Buy discount, you're on.
Yeah, man. Buy one at Best Buy.
I have another one. It's just not plugged in because I don't have room for it.
Um, I'm trying to figure out what this flag means. I'm gonna talk like that guy that makes those top 10 videos. Compulsory reporting point. It's a VFR checkpoint. Compulsory reporting point for Fresno Class Charlie airspace.
Welcome to another video. Today I'm gonna be showing you
Hey, Daniel.
Top 10 anime betrayals. Top 10 iconic Sonic the Hedgehog anime characters.
No, that guy was very, um, energetic. Over his like number 10.
Hey, Daniel. How about you breathin'?
Breathin'. Okay.
Number 15, buzzing for others.
Fork knife.
Which is true regarding the presence of alcohol within the human body? Judgment decision-making abilities can be adversely affected by even the small amounts of alcohol. I'm gonna talk like Ben Shapiro now, folks. Oh, I said Dr. Folks. Small amount of alcohol can increase vision acuity. Oh yes, increase your vision acuity with alcohol. Uh huh. An increase in altitude decreases the effects of alcohol. That's right, guys. The higher you get, the more drunk you can be safely.
Perfect.
Moral of the story. Uh, the standard temperature lapse rate below the tropopause. Below the tropopause? Oh. Compared to above the tropopause? Yeah. Increases. It remains the same. It's the same. It's the exact same. Cool. I need to memorize the, the troposphere and the tropopause and the ionosphere and the sky stuff, you know? What minimum distance should exist between intense radar echoes?
Six feet. So for the stenting.
Between thunderstorms, at least 40 miles, I think. Yeah. Hard to breathe, but that's alright. Dum. Dum 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 dum. I've got an eyelash in my eye. Not fair. Oh, this literally is that song. I didn't know this was a no copyright sounds song.
What song is it?
To breathe, but that's alright. Hush. Dum 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 dum. Dum 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 dum. Dum 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 dum. Yeah.
Dunk.
What is indicated if ice pellets are encountered at 8,000 feet? There's
Icy weeners.
There will be hail if you continue. You're approaching an area of thunderstorms or freezing grade at higher altitude. I would go thunderstorms. Nope, freezing area at higher altitude.
No, it's, it's icy weeners.
Ah, the best kind.
Hello.
Airborne retards.
Well, that's us.
You mean me and Daniel? Wow, chinchillas be over it.
That's a dumb question. This thunderstorm is extremely intense. We're how it should be avoided by a distance of at least five miles, 10 miles or 20. Well, considering you should always avoid, avoid all thunderstorms by 20. I'm gonna go with 20.
What do you mean? You're supposed to, uh, drive right through them.
Right through them.
Nothing has ever gone wrong.
Nothing's ever gone wrong flying directly to the middle of a large supercell.
Thunderstorm.
Thunder. Thunder. En route.
Mike Tyson. Mike Tyson. Thunderstorm.
Mice tyken.
Thunderstorm.
Uh, Victor 468. Four, six, eight. Oh, the middle one this time, eh? The minimum en route altitude at Trotz intersection Tango Romeo Oscar Tango Sierra is I didn't know this was part of that song. Interesting. Minimum en route altitude, let's see. 7,200? 6,800.
Are you almost done?
Nah.
I don't know. Are you almost done? I don't know. Am I almost done?
Well, I don't know.
I don't know. Why are you almost done?
I don't know. Why don't you come find out?
Minimum en route altitude? I'm gonna go 7,200. No, asterisks. Alright, IFR low en route. Aren't asterisks minimum reception altitude? I think so. So it'd be 10,000 is minimum en route. What? 11,5? Where'd they get 11,5 from?
From W.
Uh, oh, because you're crossing over to the other one. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. Got it. There's no minimum crossing altitude. It's just a minimum en route altitude on the other side of 11,5. So it's gonna be 11,5. You've consumed approximately one ounce of alcohol. How long will it take for the body to process and get rid of this alcohol? Oh, what's the formula? What's the formula? I forget the formula for alcohol per hour of, I think it's
Ravioli, ravioli. Give me the formioli.
I'm going three hours per ounce. I was right. It's three hours, three hours per ounce.
Three ounces per hour.
Um, warming from below will decrease this to Um, warming from below will decrease the stability. Yes. If a standard rate turn is maintained, how long will it take to turn three hundred and sixty degrees? Two minute full turn, duh. What happens to the stability of an air, of the air as lapse rate decreases? Yeah, of an air, a specific air, just one, one air. Yeah. Um, lapse rate is decreasing. So, if lapse rate is decreasing, stability is increasing. Boom. Hypoxia is the result of which of these conditions? Insufficient oxygen reaching the brain, true. Excessive oxygen or excessive carbon dioxide, no, it's insufficient oxygen every time.
Carbon monoxide poisoning.
That's the best. I want more of that.
Yes, please.
What are the characteristics?
Thank you, sir. May I have another?
The best part is when you turn on the heat in the small airplanes like Skyhawks, you're just like
Have a good night, you guys.
Ah. Oh, we're not gonna watch Initial D tonight?
I'll join back when you're watching Initial D.
Okay. Should I just click the study session now, or?
Oh, I'm, no, you can keep studying.
Oh, but then it'll, it'll grade the rest of them as wrong, won't it?
Nope, you can save and exit.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Oh.
Now, you need to just study.
Oh, keep working. You need to save and quit. Gotcha.
You need to, you need to work.
I'll keep fini- I'll finish it. Alright, I'm finishing it. Characteristics of unstable atmosphere. I gotta fly through this real quick, alright?
Boy.
Characteristic of unstable atmosphere would be a warm humid air mass. Could be very unstable.
Oh, that's the best kind of air mass.
Yeah, but it also goes, floats a lot because it's, it's got humidity.
Delicious.
While taxiing at night. Taxiing at night, you observe an aircraft in front of you with a white light in the middle, a green light to the right, and a red light on the left. It's taxiing away from you. Very nice. Pilot that is fatigued is hazardous because uh, serious errors are usually made by the time the pilot realizes they are too tired to fly. Pilot will probably forget all of the aircraft limitations and regulations, or the pilot may rely too much on autopilot. I'm gonna say the errors are made, yeah, okay. Breathing rapidly, you're experiencing hyperventilation. What is an effect of this? Excessive loss of carbon dioxide from the body. That's it. That's why you should breathe into a bag, because it puts more carbon dioxide in your bloodstream, which makes your body go like, oh, we're good, we're good, we're calm. We have enough, we have enough.
I'm gonna go get this bag.
Let's get this bag.
Yeah.
Figure fif- figure fifty-three, area two. Area two, uh, right in the middle. What is indicated by the star next to L in the airport information box? For uh, Madera Airport.
Madera?
Madera Airport. The star next to L means that lighting, um, lighting limitations exist. Yeah. Which is true considering the blue and magenta colors used to depict airports on sectional aeronautical charts? Airports with tower, control towers, underlying class Alpha, Bravo, and Charlie airspace are shown in blue. Delta and Echo are magenta. That's not true. That's not true. Hmm, airports with control towers, underlying class Charlie, Delta, and Echo are magen- nope. Okay, airports with control towers, underlying class Bravo, Charlie, Delta, and Echo airspace are shown in blue. That's also wrong. What?
Oui, I died.
Bro, it's all wrong. They're all wrong. Oh. Delta and Echo are, I thought it meant the airspace. No, it's talking about the airport specifically. Airports under Alpha. No, that doesn't make any sense. Because if it's under Alpha airspace, everything is under Alpha airspace, technically. Because literally Alpha airspace is everything above eighteen thousand, so literally everybody's under Alpha all the time. So that doesn't make any sense. But Bravo and Charlie, yes. Airports with control towers under Bravo and Charlie airspace are in blue, and Delta and Echo are in magenta. Nope. Airports with control towers, underlying Bravo, Charlie, Delta, and Echo are shown in blue. I guess that makes sense. Everything with the controls, the key word is control towers, cause control towers means it's, it's gonna be blue. Alright, as you prepare your nav log for an upcoming trip, you determine your true course between airports to be a hundred and twenty-five degrees. The isogonic line depicted halfway along the route shows nine degree east variation. In a no wind condition, what magnetic heading you fly? They forgot some adjectives there. It's okay.
Adjectives?
Wait, not adjectives, um, conjugatives? No, I'm not sure.
Consonants? No.
I don't think it's that one either.
Whatever that other word is.
Constipation, that's the one.
Constipation. Constipation, cha cha cha.
The true course is gonna be a hundred twenty-five degrees. Nine degree east variation. So we're flying a magnetic heading of east we add. East we add. So that would be a hundred and twenty-five plus a niner gives us a hundred and thirty-four. Nope, we subtract.
Niner, niner.
We subtract. Cool. Select this true statement pertaining to the life cycle of a thunderstorm. The beginning of rain at earth surface indicates the dissipating stage. No. Uh, updrafts continue to develop through the dissipating stage. True. No. Uh, beginning of rain at the earth surface is the mature stage. That is correct. When planning for an emergency landing at night, one of the primary considerations should include uh, landing close to public access? Or landing without flaps, I'm sure nose high, no, um, we're gonna be close to public access. Yes. Not like in a city, but you know, close. Which procedure applies to instrument departure procedures? If an instrument departure procedure is accepted, a pilot must possess a textual or graphic description. That is true for sure.
Graphic image?
Um, no. Pilot and command must accept an instrument departure procedure when issued by agency. That's not true. It's um, if you accept it, you must have it. There we go. As hyperventilation progresses, a pilot can experience uh, symptoms of suffocation and drowsiness. Decreased breathing rate, no.
We forgot death.
Nah, you won't die. It's a self-solving problem because you pass out and then you get more carbon monoxide in your body and then your body's fine, cause it's like, oh, okay, we got enough now.
Well, how about you just die instead?
Suffocation and drowsiness.
Suffocation, no breathing.
Overcome the symptoms of hyperventilation, you should swallow or yawn.
Spitters or quitters?
Slow the breathing rate. Well, duh, but like, nevermind. It's kinda hard to do when you're hyperventilating, you know, just slow it. Just, just slow it down, man. Just don't breathe so fast, you'll be fine.
Yeah, right?
While being radar vectored and approach clearance is received. Pokemon twenty-four says, you're not a pilot, you can't fly a plane. Actually, I am a pilot and I can fly a plane. I'm uh, I'm studying for my commercial license right now, so I can fly planes and make money, but not really, cause nobody will hire you until you get your certified plane instructor. Uh, an approach
I just got sandwiched.
The last assigned altitude should be maintained until established on a segment of a published route into an instrument approach procedure, yes. Flying at a coordinated turn in an airplane at constant altitude, which statement is most accurate? Coordinated turn, constant altitude. As airspeed increases, uh, the angle of bank must be decreased to maintain, no.
How could you see me?
As you increase airspeed while maintaining a constant bank angle, the rate of turn will increase and the radius will decrease. That's false. Alright, there is a specific rate and radius of turn that corresponds to each bank angle and airspeed flow. I'm going with that one. That's it. Cool. Flying at thirty degrees bank, the gear is lowered and airspeed drops by ten knots. What happens to the rate of turn? Rate of turn is going to increase because you're going slower. So now you're turning faster because
No, you're going slower.
Smaller radius. How can you determine if another aircraft is on a collision course with your aircraft? Um, there will be no relative
You'll see the plane.
That's correct. I can unmark that. Uh, figure thirty. What minimum navigation equipment is required to complete the VOR DME Alpha procedure? Let's open this up. Use Manistee altimeter setting, precision not authorized at night, missed approach, climb two thousand six hundred left turn via the HIC VOR DME, radio three four five to hopper fourteen DME arc and hold, DME and hold, okay, yes. Um, so this is this is a VOR DME or GPS Alpha approach.
You'll see the plane.
So, in order to identify, alright, you only need one VOR here. One VOR receiver. But hopper is defined by fourteen DME arc, uh, DME distance from HIC, which means you must have a, you must have a DME. There you go. To scan properly for traffic, a pilot should slowly sweep the field of vision from one side to the other at intervals. Concentrate on any peripheral movement detected, or use a series, uh, series of short regularly paced eye spaces, eye movements that bring successive areas of sky into the central visual field. I'm gonna go slowly sweep. Nope. It's that one. Cool. Figure twenty-eight.
I'm watching your stream now.
You're watching now, oh boy. I'm almost done now. There's only eighty-five questions, one seventy-five. ILS runway three one procedure. The minimum altitude for glide slope interception is
Z.
Minimum for glide slope interception is gonna be, I'm gonna say two thousand four hundred. Yes. When in the vicinity of a VOR which is being used for navigation on VFR flights, it is important to alright, you're in the vicinity of a VOR which is being used for navigation on VFR flights. You should exercise lots of vigilance.
No, you should just exercise.
Well, that too, yes. While avoiding a weather. This is, this is that question again. I've had this one before. While avoiding a weather that is in your flight path. A weather, yes, there is just a weather there. Look out, look out for a weather. And flying over twenty miles from a thunderstorm, you are under the anvil of the cell. Is this hazardous? Yes. Yes. This is still in the area of dissipation. Okay, hail. I, I, see, I said hail last time, I thought I got it wrong, but I guess not. Figure twenty-six. Hmm, oh boy, this is, this is terrain here. Eighty-eight, whoa, eight thousand eight hundred foot mountain right there. That's a big mountain. That is quite the approach. Right between a four thousand foot peak and several peaks between like four thousand and eight thousand. The final approach fix for the ILS precision approach is located at, alright, final approach fix. Right here, the Maltese cross. That is your final approach fix. It is located at Jetza. Uh,
You're located at Jetza.
It's located at two thousand two hundred is the glide slope intercept. Um, as indicated by the little lightning bolt line. Which is also where Jetza is. So, therefore that's the answer. To maintain a standard rate turn as airspeed decreases. Okay, you wanna do standard rate. Airspeed's decreasing, which means your rate's gonna increase. So your bank angle needs to decrease. Boom, I can unmark that, I've got it now. Prefer to figure fifty-two, area four. Area four, alright, top middle, Lincoln Regional. Alright, your highest obstruction within ten nautical miles of Lincoln Regional is how high above the ground?
Sixty-nine.
Ten miles, they say?
Well.
I think I remember the answer to this one. And it's like seven fourteen, yeah? No, it's six sixty-two. Why is it seven fourteen one slightly outside the area? Oh, wait. Above the ground, what a sneaky question. Should've read the whole thing. High above the ground. Guys, seven fourteen is how high it is total MSL, median sea level, but it's only six sixty-two above the ground, AGL, above ground level. That's so, that's such a cheap shot, alright. Hypoxia, sus- 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 Gotta redo that word there. Hypoxia susceptibility due to inhalation of carbon monoxide increases as altitude increases. What happens to the stability air of air, of the air as lapse rate increases? If lapse rate increases, stability will decrease. Cause it's gonna lapse faster, which means it's gonna go up faster. Why is frost considered hazardous to flight operations? It changes the basic aerodynamic shape of the airfoil. Um, it can also cause early airflow separation. Which one? I'm gonna go with B. Yes, let's go. Early airflow separation. Which weather phenomenon signals the beginning of the mature
Jamming.
Stage of thunderstorm? That's the rain, the rain starts. Hey, that's it. I'm done. Great session, let's go. Eighty-four, seventy-two out of eighty-five, correct. And that was in my weakest areas right there.
I found another mature meme. There you go, Daniel.
Uh-oh. Wow. I mean.
Yikes.
I mean.
Ouch.
I mean, that's basically all of it. Period. Yep. Yep.
Ouch.
Mm-hmm, ouch. Alright, well. I am uh, I'm done now. Study session over.
Well, that means you're done streaming.
It does. It's gonna end in just a second or two.
You literally were like almost just streaming for literally an hour.
It's, it's an hour and seven minutes and ten seconds, actually.
Close enough.